Harold, Harold, look at Jenny.
Sure.
Call to order the June 8th meeting of the Cary Town Council.
May notice we have one less member up here with us this evening. Laurie Bush is on a well-deserved family vacation. At this time, I'll call on Ms. Johnson for our ceremonial opening.
I want to share a few thoughts. These are my thoughts on Pride Month. As everybody probably knows, Pride Month is celebrated every June. And, you know, at its core, it's about celebrating together with our LGBTQIA+ friends and neighbors and family. And I'm proud to be part of Pride for Cary. And I'm happy to see the diversity here in Cary celebrated. And I'm so inspired by the incredible spirit of inclusion and acceptance I've seen in our LGBTQIA+ community. And I so admire the hard work of our local advocacy organizations who've battled what's been an uphill climb. So I want to wish everybody a very happy Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Oh, now please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, which takes us to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And our first item is reading of the Pride Month proclamation. Designating June 2023 as Pride Month in Cary. Whereas, the month of June is widely known as the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Time to recognize, celebrate, and reflect on the impact and contributions that the LGBTQIA+ community has made across the world. And whereas Cary is committed to fostering a diverse, equitable, and inclusive workplace and community where everyone feels valued, supported, and empowered to be their authentic and best selves, where people of many backgrounds and lived experiences enrich the community and make Cary a great place to live, work, visit, enjoy, and raise a family. And whereas Cary's participation in the Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index scorecard helps demonstrate that Cary's commitment to ensuring that Cary has inclusive services for the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas Cary established a Humans Relations Inclusion and Diversity Task Force with the focus of improving the quality of life in our community through the encouragement of mutual understanding and respect amongst all people in Cary. And whereas Cary adopted a non-discrimination resolution and policy that prohibits discrimination in public accommodations and employment against a broader base of protected classes that also includes sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression to eliminate barriers that prevent people from reaching their full potential and being their true and best selves. And whereas, we, the Cary Town Council reaffirm our support of Cary's LGBTQIA+ community and remain committed to preserving the health, safety, and welfare of all people in Cary. Now therefore, I, Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, and on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Cary in celebration of diversity and unity and to inspire equity and respectful treatment of all people in a safe and welcoming Cary. Proclaim this 8th day of June 2023. All right, moving right along, Jack, I believe you're up next for the Women's Veterans Day proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand we had some great turnout at Veterans Freedom Park and over at Hillcrest recent Memorial Day, and I appreciate all those that attended. What I'd like to read now is a proclamation designating June 12th as Women's Veterans Day in Cary. And whereas on June 12th, 1948, President Harry S. Truman signed the Women's Armed Services Integration Act, enabling women to serve as permanent, regular members of the United States military services. And whereas North Carolina women have served in the American military since before we became a nation, they were not officially recognized as military members until 1948. Whereas 50 years ago, the Navy admitted the first women pilots. Forty-one years ago, Aileen B. Dirk became the first naval female admiral and the first flag-ranked woman officer in the military. Fifteen years ago, the Army named Annie Durwood the first four-star female general, and she graduated. And six years ago, apologize, Campbell June graduated, the first three women Marines to be enrolled in the School of Infantry. And whereas over 25,000 women served overseas during World War I, over 7,000 North Carolina women served during World War II, and over 265,000 American women served during the Vietnam War, including eight were listed on the Vietnam War Memorial Wall. Now therefore, on behalf of Harold Weinberg of North Carolina and the entire Cary Council, I do hereby designate June 12th as Women's Veterans Day, and I urge all citizens to participate in honoring all who served our country, including women, for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. This was so proclaimed on the 8th day of June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We now move to the managers' update, and I'll call on our town manager, Sean Stiegel.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to let our citizens know to be looking in their mail for one of these. It's an information sheet about your district and your council. Since we did redistricting recently, we wanted to put out a public information piece for our citizens to help them. Jenny and her team worked with marketing to put these together, and I think they came out really great. And this idea comes directly from Councilmember Robinson, so thank you for that. Next, we talked about this for a few minutes at last night's Economic Development Committee, but I wanted to share with everyone just how amazing the soccer tournament was. It was well-organized, well-promoted, and well-attended, and the positive publicity Cary received was extraordinary. And just the week before, we hosted the NCAA Women's Lacrosse Championship that also played to a national audience. I know because one of my best friends in Illinois was watching and texted me during the televised event. And right now, we're hosting the NCAA's at USA Baseball. These are amazing opportunities for our citizens to enjoy firsthand, and they're a strong contributor to Cary's national brand identity, not to mention the direct economic benefit to our hotels, restaurants, and other businesses. They simply wouldn't be possible if it weren't for our staff teams who work across departments to support each other in getting the job done. In particular, for the three events I've just mentioned is our team, led by Assistant Public Works Director Jimmy Simpson, under the leadership of Matt Flynn. Jimmy is known nationally for his expertise in turf management, and I personally think it's a tragedy that we haven't given him a golf course to. So let's give everyone involved a round of applause. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Stiegel. Our next agenda item is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the online and printed agendas. There were three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, calling in, or attending here in person tonight. If you are here in person and would like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are highlighted and shown as reserved. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and you may speak on anything that is not a public hearing, because public hearing speakers get five minutes, so you'll get more time at a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium. It'll start off with a green light. When there's 30 seconds remaining, it'll turn to a yellow light, and when your time expires, it'll turn to a flashing red light, and that's the point. I'll interrupt you again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to everyone. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out, and I'll first call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
We had three written comments and two registered speakers for tonight. Our written comments are summarized as follows. Samantha Marto asked about the current policies in place to protect the environment, encourage accessibility policies, requested drop-off spots for items other than food waste, recommended affordable housing be built in a safe, environmentally friendly way. Laura and Bruce Spader expressed their strong disagreement about the direction that our government seems to want to take with the town center. And we had one anonymous written comment who expressed concerns about the amount of trees that are cut down near Cary Parkway and Chatham Street and how it removes buffers between the street and the houses.
Okay.
Our two registered speakers, the first one is Kristen Graham.
Kristen Graham, could you come forward, please?
Hi, my name's Kristen Graham, and I thought I was going to say Mr. Justin, so this might be a little backwards. So I'm speaking as a representative of the BMX community and wanted to make sure that we were doing everything possible to support the growth and improvement of Cary Action Sports. Cary has a unique opportunity to create a world-class facility by building upon the amazing park that we already have. My motives may be a little bit selfish because my 10-year-old son is a BMX rider, and we basically live at that park. We are there five to six days a week for private lessons, coaching. We do monthly passes, and I might get in trouble for saying this, but I live in Raleigh. And although it's a 23-minute drive, we are there 99% of the time, even though we pass other parks on the way. The Town of Cary and the Parks and Rec Department have done an amazing job building Cary Action Sports and putting together a really awesome staff. The team has created an environment that brings together all action sports, and they can ride and train and play in a safe and inclusive environment, no matter what your skill level is. And I'm not sure that you guys really know how unique that is. This is interesting, that, did you know that BMX freestyle made its debut as an Olympic sport at the Tokyo Olympics in 2020? Or that there are multiple Olympic freestyle athletes and medalists living and training in this area? Did you know that freestyle Olympic coach is also a consultant at Cary Action Sports? Or that the USA Cycling Federation wants to name Cary as the official home of the US BMX Freestyle Olympic Team? Did you also know that my son Tyson got to recently meet BMX racer Jamie Staff, Coach Ryan Nyquist, and road cyclist Jim Miller when they came to a meeting with the Cary staff? And those aren't the only Olympians that he's met at Cary Action Sports. He's ridden with Nikita Ducaro, Hannah Roberts, Justin Dowell, Paris Benengas, all people that are living and training here. The addition of BMX freestyle in the Olympics has helped bring a legitimacy to action sports and broaden people's minds to sports beyond just basketball, football, and baseball. With this mainstream momentum, there's no better time for Cary to establish itself as a leader in producing the next-generation Olympic athletes. It's important for Cary to take advantage of the support of key organizations like USA Cycling and Coach Nyquist. They seek a home base for not just training, but for larger world-class events, and Cary would benefit from the tourism and revenue as a result. Again, my motives might be a little bit selfish, because hopefully my son is going to be one of those future Olympic athletes. The next five to seven years are crucial in making it happen for Tyson and crucial for the town to fast-track the project, so it parallels the current growth
Graham, I'm sorry.
Of the action sports world.
Your time has expired, but I would like to read the rest of your comments, if you would be so kind to turn them into the clerk.
Absolutely.
She'll make sure we get a copy of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Justin Franco.
So Ms. Franco is the first half of this speech that we, okay, got it.
All right, good evening, Mayor Weinberg. Esteemed members of the City Council and fellow community members, I'll be quick because I have a lot to say. So I would like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to Mayor Weinberg for the invaluable letter of support in the Wake County grant application. Your support has been instrumental in advancing our sports, and we greatly appreciate it. In our communication with Cary, we understand that budget approval is still pending, and upon reviewing this year's proposed budget, we discovered that what is allocated does not meet the improvements identified in the grant. I am delighted to see Cary staff have brought key players to the table, like the endorsements from USA Cycling and the BMX Freestyle Olympic Coach. Their highlight shows an immense potential coming to our community, transforming this location into a hub for Olympic competitions would not only bring pride to our city, but also create significant economic and cultural benefits for our community. Finally, this proposal aligns perfectly with our visions for paving a pathway for the Olympics for all action sports athletes. We are intrigued by its potential and would appreciate an update on the status or how we could get more involved and show our support as a community. It is essential to emphasize that this proposal represents the voices of an entire action sports community and not just a specific group or organization, and that these improvements will benefit the entire community, fostering inclusivity and providing opportunities for active and healthy lifestyles. Moreover, a personal story here, as an avid skater, I not only enjoy the skate park myself, but I also bring my girl daughter with me pretty much on a daily basis, and seeing her joy and sense of camaraderie among the local skaters demonstrates the positive impact action sports can have on families and individuals of all ages. Action sports helps build toughness, grit, and willpower while promoting mental well-being and resilience. Finally, I would like to underscore the image Cary can provide by embracing these improvements, by investing in this vision. Cary can shine as a star among cities, symbolizing a commitment to a vibrant and progressive community. These efforts will not only enhance recreational opportunities, but also attract attention and admiration, further contributing to our city's overall appeal. In conclusion, I respectfully request that the City Council please consider allocating the full funds for the proposed improvements to the park in fiscal year 2024. With enhancements, these enhancements will not only benefit the action sports community, but also the entire city, fostering economic growth, community engagement, and a positive image for Cary. Thank you for your attention and consideration, and please let us know how we can help in any way.
Thank you, Ms. Franco.
Awesome.
No additional speakers.
Okay. This is a time for those who have not registered that would like to speak at Public Speaks Out to come forward, if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out.
Mayor, council members, and staff, I'm here to speak on two topics. My name is Mary Collins, and I'm here to speak on two topics this evening. The first one is the economic value and cultural value of trees. And I've been following the process of our Canopy and Urban Forest Plan, and I'm very excited to see that we are talking about protecting and managing existing forests. A friend of mine, George McDowell, made, I think, a compelling recommendation that the town hall area could be converted into the first arboretum of its kind ever in the country. So as we're moving forward to thinking about ways to use the town hall land, I'd like to ask that you consider the benefits economically and culturally of doing that. My second topic is related to the budget, but it's just a question, I guess. I noticed in Section 108 Loan Repayment, which is under the HUD section, there is an item for location 301 South Academy Street. This year, it appears that we will be paying $105,000 in interest and principal toward a $1,400,000 loan. That is, again, one of the three parcels, I believe, that was part of the Maitland Inn project. So as a citizen, I'm just a bit confused about what the citizens' financial obligations are to the existing Maitland Inn project as it stands now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Stiegel can get someone in contact with you to get answers to your questions. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the Town Council. My name is Michael Yates, 314 Bargate Drive, Cary, North Carolina, and I am the founder and chair of Pride of Cary. I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, as well as all of you, for the Pride proclamation he enacted this evening and for the Town of Cary's commitment to the celebration and inclusive programming and events throughout the month of June, recognizing the achievements and contributions made by members of the LGBTQIA+ community. Pride, an acronym for Personal Rights in Defense and Education, was formed to mark the anniversary of the Stonewall uprising and the beginning of the equality movement in June of 1969, exactly three years before I was born. Today, my husband and I are grateful to be members of this community that recognizes us and appreciates the value of diversity. I thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening, and I wish you all a very happy pride.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and will move to the consent agenda. That's item four, if you're following along. For the benefit of people watching this meeting on TV or streaming, I'll take a moment to review our consent items. Please know that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have sole source purchase of granular activated carbon for Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility biofiltration upgrade phases two and three. That sounds exciting. Really. Approval of a resolution to ratify the amended Charter of the Central Pines Regional Council, FKA TJ Cog.
That is exciting.
Would council members like either? For discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out, with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is on the fiscal year 2024 budget. Financial analysis manager Mike Franks will present this item and will open it up to the public hearing. Once his report is complete, council will not take action on this item this evening. It is scheduled to be up for a vote at our next council meeting later in this month. Mr. Franks.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I'm excited to be here tonight to hold a second of two public hearings on the fiscal year 2024 budget. An overview of the budget was presented to Town Council at the quarterly meeting on May 11th. Council received a copy of the budget on the 11th, and the budget was posted on the town's website. The budget has also been advertised on social media. The first public hearing occurred on May 18th, and staff is meeting with a speaker that addressed the stormwater project included in the budget. Tonight, we are holding the second public hearing, and the budget is scheduled to be approved on the 22nd. The total town budget is $523.8 million, with the primary focus being to maintain and enhance existing services. The budget includes investments in priority areas like housing, public safety, parks, stormwater, and the environment. The budget also includes several priority positions and investment infrastructure and maintenance. Here's a summary of the town's total budget. The largest portion of the budget is the general funds, which funds Cary's core services like police, fire, parks, and finance. Fiscal year 2024 budget maintains the property tax rate at .345, with one penny equaling $3.4 million. The solid waste fee remains at $22 per month with a 96% cost recovery rate. Utility rate increases 3% to cover increased costs for items such as chemicals, which are necessary to operate the system. This would equal a $2.57 per month increase for an average family of four. There are a variety of ways for the public to continue to provide input on the budget, including social media, email, and voicemail. The remaining key date for the budget is June 22nd, which is scheduled for council adoption. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to start the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Franks. Now it's time for the public hearing for fiscal year 2024 budget. I'm going to call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
If you're in the audience this evening and would like to speak on the budget, now's the time. I'll invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak on the fiscal year 2024 budget? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we will see this again at our next meeting on June the 22nd. Thank you, Ms. Franks. And I believe you're up for the next item. Our next public hearing is the Utility System Development Fee Public Hearing. And once again, Mr. Franks will present this item, and council may take action. Ms. Franks.
Good evening. Tonight, we are taking steps required by state legislation to conduct an analysis of utility system development fees. The analysis has been posted on Cary's website for at least 45 days, along with an explanation and solicitation for public comment culminating in this public hearing. State law requires localities to review utility system development fees every five years. Cary's last review completed in 2018, so a review is required this year. As required by state law, Cary hired a qualified financial professional, STANTEC, which has significant experience performing analysis like these in North Carolina. STANTEC works with staff to review Cary's utility system development fees, which are charged during the permit process when new construction requires water and sewer service. Per state law, the analysis completed this year establishes the maximum amount that can be charged. Cary used the buy-in method, which determines the system development fees solely on the existing utility system needs. The replacement cost of each system's major functional components serves as the cost basis for the system development fee calculation. This approach is most appropriate for a system with ample excess capacity like Cary, such that most new connections to the system will be served by that existing capacity, and the customers are effectively buying in to the existing system. After the public hearing, the analysis will be finalized by the consultant, and the rates will be adopted as part of the FY 2024 budget. And with that, Mayor. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to start the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Franks. Now it's time for the public hearing for Utility System Development Fee Public Hearing. And I'll call on the clerk once again to read any written comments or call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
If you're here in the audience and would like to speak on the utility system development fee, I would invite you forward at this time. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion. Don't be shy.
How about I move that council adopt the... I want to get it right the first time. Utility system development fee proposed.
There's a motion.
I second it.
If I could, a brief clarification, that you'll be adopting the system development fee written analysis, not the actual fee tonight, but the analysis.
And I second that.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Once again, thank you, Ms. Franks. And our next public hearing is Carpenter Point Phase III Annexation. And Assistant Planning Director Katie Dry will introduce the item, and council may take action. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The owners of property at 6920, 6932, and 7,000 Indian Wells Road have petitioned for annexation of 7.8 acres so that parcels may connect to Cary utilities and to facilitate the construction of up to 49 townhouses. The total annexation area is 8.57 acres, which includes .77 acres of intervening right-of-way, which is adjacent to the... The area is contiguous to Cary's corporate limits and within the ETJ. The property is zoned transitional residential conditional use based on a rezoning case 18REZ13. The associated development plan, which is number 21DP 3285, is under review, and based on the provisions of the LDO, it can be approved administratively when staff determines the plan meets all applicable LDO requirements. In accordance with the ordinance, the property must be annexed before the development plan can be approved. And following tonight's public hearing, council may take action on the request. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. Now it's time for the public hearing for Carpenter Point Phase III Annexation. And I'll call on the clerk to read any written comments or call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
If you're here in the audience and would like to speak at this public hearing, now's your time to come forward. Anyone to speak in this public hearing? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
Make a motion to approve Annexation 23801.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to our discussion item. It's the proposed amendment to the Town Code of Ordinances, and our police chief, Mr. Salt, will present the item, and council may take action. Chief.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to present this tonight. This is a follow-up to the quarterly meeting, where we discuss the potential of new ordinances in order to address the prosperity and growth that we're experiencing in Cary. It's an exciting time to be part of the community, and we just want to be proactive in the way that we are prepared to deal with things that we haven't had to deal with in the past. And basically, it's just closing loopholes that are in the state statute to make sure that we're fair and impartial to everyone and responsible to everyone's rights and protecting them. These ordinances are... might on the face of them look a little unusual, and you think they're already against law, but they're really not. And... ...and public lewdness. And the issue in regards to defacement of property, it's only illegal to... if you damage property. But if we have situations where people are writing on our signs, and they can be cleaned off, or if they're stopping up intentionally the storm drains to where our streets flood and things along those lines, that's not actually damaging property. So what this does is give us an opportunity to make sure that we can protect citizens and keep the streets safe, but also make sure that we keep our community clean and safe. Unintended property is one of the... only ordinance here requested that is not a criminal offense. It would be a civil offense. But it basically codifies our ability to operate the lost and found, if you will. But it also gives us an opportunity to... if we have a package or something like that left or a briefcase or something in a crowded area, and we want to make sure that we can check that, and gives us the actual authority to address that issue under the ordinance. Vehicle trespass is a very similar issue in regards to... you would think that it might be against the law for someone to come up and start sitting on your car if you've got a very expensive car or a classic car. You wouldn't want someone sitting on your car or something along those lines. Well, this actually codifies that because, again, if someone does that, unless they damage the car, it's not a violation of law currently. And as you know, we have a lot of car shows. A lot of people are proud of their vehicles. And as a result of that, we just want to be able to protect their property and do it by law and fair and impartial to everyone. Parking deck rules for the town-owned parking decks, we want to be able to set rules. You know, are they open or closed? Are they open all the time? Are events allowed in there? We want to have the ability to address those things and be proactive, once again, for safety purposes. And with that, the ordinance will return to council and before final action, and then become effective upon adoption if you choose to do so.
Thank you, Chief. I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments. These seem like no brainers to me. Low-hanging fruit. We'll get more difficult ones in a future, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. This is just the first of perhaps some more that will come.
So is there a motion?
Some.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Just want to thank the chief and everyone with Cary PD and the manager's office and the attorney's office and everybody for working on this. I know it sounds easy, and they sound simple enough, but I know they're a lot more complicated than they really are. So just thank you for that. Thank you for being proactive, so we don't end up having instances like this and then have to chase it after the fact. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. That concludes the regular agenda. We're now ready for a closed session, and I would ask someone to read our closed session motion.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we moved into... we move into closed session here on June 8th, 2023 pursuant to GS 143-318.11A, Sections 1, 3, and 6. I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between attorneys and the town and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential pursuant to the laws of the state or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we move into closed session. We're going into the closed session room?
Lori Sue needs it. I'm going home. She makes it.